Exactly.
But I don't need to like. One with any. They just don't. Yeah. It makes sense. I mean, no. So when I'm doing. I knew you. And I knew they were. And that's why it's kind of like, and again, I can be wrong. You know. But I just. And I think if they do. Yeah. Yeah, it was awful. Because our 18th year we never had an issue. But we do get stuff on that. They don't do that. Yeah. Well, I don't know. This year was a very expensive. I read the bottom. So I think it's. But I have a million dollars of personal interest. Okay. I definitely. Okay. It was not a medical. My book numbers came and they freaked out.
Mark, did you hear?
Mm-hmm. I don't know.
Wait, none of you count the woman.
I didn't make her. I heard about somebody.
She was a train.
That's right.
Yeah.
Definitely a train.
Train on 27th Street.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Jessica.
We're just doing our time.
Yeah. Are you ready down there?
Okay. Would you call for the vote? I mean, call for the roll, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb. Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please join me in stand to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have proclamation here to read. Whereas in 1991 congressional resolution named the second full week in April of every year National Telecommunicators Week, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time or any place and require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas 911 is the hotline for help for people in emergency situations under 911, when call-taker voice is the first assurance that help is on the way, and whereas 911 professionals regularly meet the challenges of extremely stressful situations and calmness with calmness and efficiency, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the 911 communication center, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the 911 dispatchers' everyday superheroes, providing assistance before any other emergency services arrive on the scene, and whereas public safety dispatchers are a vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the treatment of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis, and whereas each dispatcher, excuse me, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her daily job duties, now therefore I, Glenn Lewis, mayor of the city of Moore, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2019, as National Telecommunication or Communicators Week in honor of the men and women who diligently and professionalism keep our region's citizens and emergency responders safe. And I'm always proud to do this one. This is one of the better ones. And I'll let you do the presentation. Whoever reads it, I don't know who gets it.
We have Tammy Cullen is here.
Oh, okay. I didn't see her.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys for the job. I really do think that's probably one of the hardest jobs in the city. We do appreciate the work you do. Okay, item two is a consent docket. Item may is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 1st, 2019. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held March 5th, 2019. Item C, declare a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria VN number 2FAPB7BV3AX108529 and a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria VN number 2FAHP71V69X129138 as surplus. Item D is approve a contract with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, for acceptance of a public fleet conversion grant in the amount of $57,980. And item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures run by 2018, 2019 in the amount of $2,104,866.2. I think we missed B. I missed what? Oh, did I?
Read C again.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I missed Crown. There's three Crowns. I'm sorry. The third Crown Vic is item number 2FAFP711V08X151349. Sorry about that. But there are three Crown Victorias.
Most of them approved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is it consent docket? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is considering, consider awarding RFB number 1900-08, Southwest 34th Street Widening Project from Southwest Telephone Road to Southwest Santa Fe Avenue to TJ Campbell Construction in the amount of $3,861,510.35 to be funded using a 2018 Geo bond.
Mayor and council, on March 19th, the city received three bids from contractors for the Southwest 34th Street Widening Project from Southwest Telephone Road to Southwest Santa Fe Avenue. The lowest responsive bidder was TJ Campbell Construction in the amount of $3,861,510.35. Cardinal Engineering, our design engineer reviewed the bid proposals, and after reviewing the proposals and calling references, made a recommendation to the city to recommend awarding to the lowest responsible bidder, TJ Campbell. The funding source is from the 2018 Geo bond. The estimated time to complete construction, once they are given the notice to proceed, would be 240 calendar days, and staff is recommending that you award the contract.
Was this close to the amount that we had calculated?
Yes, very close. I think, I believe we had four, a little over four million, which also included the cost for the engineering also. So yes, and all three bids were within 6% of each other, so they were very close.
Have we ever used them? On other city projects?
Well, I could not answer that. I do not know.
Have we ever used TJ Campbell Construction on other city projects? Or have they done projects in other cities?
I believe you did a number of years ago. It was before my time, but my understanding is we have used them in the past. Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Sir, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Item carries. Item number four is consider awarding a design contract to Meachack and Associates in the amount of $228,000 for professional engineering services for the preparation of construction plans for the Little River and Kelly Creek Channel project from Northwest 12th Street to Southwest 4th Street using 2018 Geo bonds.
Mayor and council, as the mayor indicated, two additional projects with the 2018 Geo bond were two drainage projects, one serving Kelly Creek, and a second one with a Little River project. One project is a continuation of the second project, and so what we're recommending is that we go ahead and have one engineering firm design both projects because they tie in with each other. And Meachack has done a lot of work for the city and put together the FEMA maps and has a good history and understanding of what's necessary. One of the timeframe for plans and specifications should be ready by the, about March, end of March of 2020, and then we would start the bidding process for construction, which would take another 90 days or so before we'd be ready to award a contract sometime around June of 2020. Staff would recommend that you award the design contract to Meachack.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote? There's no other discussion.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider awarding a contract to Cunningham Appraisal Services Incorporated in the amount of $76,500 to provide appraisal services for the purpose of obtaining permanent roadway and utilities and temporary workspaces for construction of the Southeast Drainage Lift Station and Sewer Pipe Project.
Mayor and council, last month, the Public Works Authority approved financing for improvements to wastewater utility facilities by issuance of a 2019 promissory note with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the amount of $15 million. The major improvement as part of that loan with the Water Resources Board was the construction of a new sewer lift station in, on the east locate, to be located on the east side of Sunny Lane adjacent to Indian Hills Road. It also will include about just shy of three miles of force main from the new lift station, a 36-inch force main from the new lift station to the wastewater treatment plant, as well as about a mile and a half of gravity flow line from the old lift station serving that area, gravity into the new lift station. What this does allow us to do is, it does allow for growth in the southeast part of the city of Moore and eliminate a couple of isolated smaller lift stations. And so this also provides the ability to have development in the southeast part of Moore. In order to do that, to move forward with the construction of these improvements, it's necessary for us to obtain an appraisal services, services for the purpose of obtaining permanent roadway and utility easements, as well as a temporary workspace easement. And so we recommend that you award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder that we received, and he is a certified appraiser, in the amount of $76,500. The timeframe anticipated to obtain the, or perform the appraisals is in the seven to eight week timeframe.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
So a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on this? No, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of an agreement with Signal System Management Incorporated in the amount of $17,520 to maintain communications and monitor traffic signal operations at various intersections within the city.
Mayor and council, this is for the 19th Street Corridor for, to monitor our signal lights from Broadway to Santa Fe. We've had a contract with these guys for three years now, and they've done a good job, and I recommend approval.
Okay. I think that's why I was 15 months late.
I wouldn't want to do it without them.
Can you explain just a little bit of what that system does?
Okay. They monitor that with computers. Each intersection has a computer in the signal box. And so they monitor that, and they keep those timed. And they make adjustments as needed during the year. And sometimes we have to have them come out and look at an issue, and then they'll call a traffic technician to come out and make repairs.
Is it live monitoring?
Yes.
So they can make changes.
They can pull it up at any time. Yeah, I've called them before on the phone, and the vice president of the company lives here in Moore, so.
All right.
So today, there was just some information that went out on the 19th telephone and the timing, and this is something that they provide us, that information, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because that is very, very helpful, and I know it was addressing some of those issues that probably.
Yeah. Yeah, they keep that data for a year.
Yeah, it was where it was said, if you hit one light, you hit them all. And it was causing them pretty good backup, and they got that worked out now, so that's good. Do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item seven is consider ordinance number 90319, amending Part 3, Chapter 1, Section 3-101, amending definition of a mixed beverage license and a special event license providing for several buildings and providing for repealer.
Mayor and council, this item is modifying the definition of what a mixed beverage license holder is authorized to do. It also is modifying the definition of what a special event license holder can do. What it does basically is it adds that they're able to sell beer and wine in addition to the mixed beverage. It was unclear the way it was written currently. The staff is recommending approval of this item, and I can answer any questions that anybody might have.
You can ask me at work.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you, boy. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider ordinance number 90419, amending Part 10, Chapter 4, Section 10-404, amending the definition of a special event and adding definitions for an expressive special event and spontaneous expressive event, and setting the deadlines in the application process for a special event providing for several buildings and providing for repealer.
Mayor and council, this item, it better defines what a special event is. There was some confusion before as to what, in what circumstances somebody would come and apply for a special event license. We also came up with a definition for an expressive special event and a spontaneous expressive event, and what the differences are between those two items. We came up with timelines as for each one of the expressive events. Staff is recommending approval of this item, and I can answer any questions if anybody has.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider ordinance number 90519, amending Part 15, Chapter 19, Section 15-1901, by establishing appropriate methods for verifying insurance of motor vehicles and providing for several buildings and providing for repealer.
Mayor and council, this item here, it modifies what a police officer needs to document in order for the officer to find probable cause that a vehicle is not insured, which would then allow the officer to impound the vehicle if needed. Starting in January of 2018, there is Oklahoma Insurance Department online verification system as 24 hours a day. We've added that to our ordinance and eliminated one section that is no longer necessary. I can answer any questions that anybody may have.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. We've, we got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Would you call for the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider increasing the residential sewer and sewage disposal fees by adding an additional $3 surcharge beginning May 1st, 2019 to repay the Oklahoma Water Resources Board loan incurred for the construction of a new sanitary sewer treatment plant and maintain charges on existing lines and remaining in effect until the debt is satisfied.
Mayor and council, this is the 34th Street Lift Station that was previously approved by council. We closed on the loan from OWRB on April the 2nd for the $15 million. Because it was, when I reported to council before, I had projected that the debt service on this might be $3.41. That was based on a conventional loan. Because OWRB funded this through a bond issue, the debt, the debt payment is quite a bit lower. The actual debt service on this loan will be $2.80, and then also recommended additional 20 cents to help repair water and sewer lines that need to be replaced. As discussed during the budget process last year, we have a number of these lines in the northwest part of the city that are over 40 years old and need some attention, so this would, this would be a big step in letting us do that. This will be a 30-year note, which is all, which is what the other notes that we have with OWRB are. They were all 30-year notes. And senior citizens will continue to get a discount on this like they do on the other surcharges. Recommend approval.
Let me ask you a question. One of the things we, we didn't talk about was, this will allow this sewer, will allow us to expand our new house development over there. What about if we added a surcharge for the permit for a new house in that area? Could that cover the cost of that? Pay that down sooner? Is that a possibility?
Well, OWRB typically does not like prepayment on their loans. They, whatever you sign up for, they prefer that you stick with the term.
Well, maybe, what I was thinking maybe is we could get that 20 cents down on the, on the existing line. It would be two each or whatever. Just thinking that out loud.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's something we could always revisit at future date.
Okay.
And just, so I don't know how to ask questions. Our senior, adult, senior citizens, how do they qualify for the discounted rate?
They just, they just come to customer service and sign up for it.
But if they're already getting the discount, they would automatically get the discount.
Yeah, if they're already getting it, they will, they will automatically get this discount too. They don't have to do anything different.
So they just come to City Hall, or they go over to what?
Well, the, the, the senior citizens that are, that are already receiving service from the city, they will, they will automatically get that. But anybody new, any, any new customer just comes to City Hall.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Do you have the ages on that, correct?
Uh, I think 65, but I'm not sure if that's right.
62.
62. 62, thank you.
Most to approve.
All right, thank you.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote? If there's no other discussion on this item.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Sometimes you just have to do the hard thing, and this need to be done, so. Item number 11 is consider adoption of Resolution Number 92619, adopting the scheduled fees and charges effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed and repealing prior inconsistent fees.
Mayor and council, what this item does is, it is adding the surcharges that were just adopted to the sewer and sewage disposal charges. While going through the fee schedule, I also came across some changes that needed to have been done to the rental fees for the meeting rooms and pavilions at the city. parks. They were, uh, adopted previously, but were never, I guess the changes were never put into the fee schedule, so that's now in the fee schedule as well. Uh, staff recommends approval, and I can answer any questions.
What does it cost to rent a park?
It all depends on the type of, uh, pavilion that there is. And from talking to Todd, it all depends really on which pavilion and what park it is.
Yeah, more residents get a discount, non-residents pay a, I think about twenty-five percent per unit.
Okay. So like a pavilion that's just a regular park, say a fifth street park, what does that cost?
It's ten dollars an hour, uh, the first few hours, and then, uh, non-resident, I think it's fifteen dollars per hour, so it's fifty percent per unit.
I had a couple people ask me about this, and I said, I don't know. They told me they didn't know you could rent a pavilion, and I said, I guess you can. Okay, so now we have. Our should do a proof? Thank you. Second. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number twelve is consider approval of a contract with Crawford and Associates to provide the finance department with financial services and special projects and prepare the city's annual financial statements for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Mayor and council, uh, this contract is mainly for financial statement preparation, but may include limited special projects if needed. The cost for these services are estimated at fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh, Crawford does a great job for us, and with their expertise in governmental accounting, we know that our financial statements, excuse me, are prepared in accordance with governmental accounting standards. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
How come we separate this out from Dillon and Associates who do the auditing? Why do we separate that?
Because we've got two different firms doing a different piece.
I've always reported in the past, years back, we always had Crawford do it, or we had Dillon do it, and now we got one doing one, and one doing the other.
Right, right. Under the standards now, you, you need separation between those that do the preparation and those that actually do the auditing part, so.
Separation of who uses the big deal now. Okay. Well, it's an extra fifty-six thousand bucks, that's what I asked.
Well, uh, mayor and council, actually, the, uh, by having Crawford do this, it reduces the fee that we pay the, to the auditors.
Okay, so, great.
So, to- so total dollars is about the same, it's just split out.
Do we have a budgeted dollar?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve? All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number twelve is consider approval of a con- oh, excuse me. Item number thirteen is consider, uh, the approval of a contract with Dillon and Associates for auditing services for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a motion to approve? Second. Thank you, thank you, boy. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? What does it cost on this to do the audit?
Uh, it's approximately forty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fourteen is consider acceptance of a quote from Mayor Field Office Supply in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred, twenty-two dollars for the purchase of twenty-two executive chairs to replace council chamber and conference room chairs.
Uh, mayor and council, the chairs you are sitting in and the chairs in the council conference, uh, room are at least twenty-five years old, and so we have obtained three quotes for the chairs that we have selected and request your approval to accept the quote from Mayor Field Office Supplies for seventeen thousand, six twenty-two.
All right, thank you. Anybody want to make a motion? It's exciting. Do not lean back in the chair you're sitting in, because you will go airborne. All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, I, yes. Item carries. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the more public courts authority meeting. Item fifteen is consent docket. I can get it sent over. Item A is receive and approve amendments of the regular more public courts authority meeting held April first, two thousand nineteen. Item B, ratified action of the city council to impose additional monthly sanitary sewer rate surcharge. Item C, approve and ratify claimant expenditures FY two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen in the amount of three hundred, two thousand, six hundred, thirty-one dollars, sixty-four dollars. Will be approved? All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion in a second on a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the more public courts authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item sixteen is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held April first, two thousand nineteen. Item B is approve and ratify claimant expenditures of FY two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen in the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred, forty-three dollars, ninety-three cents. Make a motion to approve? All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion in a second on a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item's not here. It's, um, recess the more risk management meeting and convene the more economic development authority meeting. That's Louis. Item seventeen, roll call. Would you call for a roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Thank you. Item eighteen is consent docket. Item A is receive and approve amendments of the regular more economic development authority meeting held March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Make a motion to approve?
Next.
Okay, it's consent docket. Would you call for a roll, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
This time, we'll recess the more economic development authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. All right, thank you. Let the record show that all the members that were present before are still present. The item number nineteen is new business. We have item A, citizen forum for items not on the agenda. We have someone here signed up. Uh, Mr. Fuller?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mayor and council, I'll make this brief. Um, my name is Ryan Fuller. I'm a citizen here in more Oklahoma. I live just out on the east side of town. Um, and about a year ago, I was approached by a group saying, hey, we want to do some research on, on your water. I said, okay, that's great, but what kind of research? Oh, we're just testing water throughout the state of Oklahoma, and we want to select more. Can we use your house? I said, sure. Here's a couple of conditions. I want the reports. I want the results. They're mine, okay? I have those. I need to share those with you. So I'm going to give you a copy of my results. Um, we're going to look at them. I'm going to continue to do my own testing through my own money and give you updates on what I find out. That's all I'm here to do. I'm here to inform you because I've been informed. That's it. So Mayor Lewis, I'm going to present to you with some copies.
You would just start in the normal class.
Oh, great.
Will you say your address for us as well, for the record?
It's twenty-six oh four Southeast Sixth Circle.
Are you in Rock Creek?
I am in Rock Creek. Yeah, Mayor Lewis, there's one that has my actual reports behind it. It's a thicker copy. This is a letter with the results that was given to me Sunday, or I received it on Sunday.
We have, we have two or three, uh, water wells that have been shut down because of ours, maybe.
Oh, I, I, hey, I'm not here to say the water's bad. I'm not he- I'm just saying, these are my test results I got. I'm going to continue to monitor. I need your help.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to continue, if I, two years down the road and I see the same results, now I'm not happy. Um, now I'm paying for something I shouldn't have been paying for. That's not fair. But this is preliminary. This is not vetted by the city. This is just an independent person saying, hey, can I test your water? So the results here, I wanted to bring to you. We don't have to discuss the results. They're in front of you, they're in front of me. If I find out anything else that's interesting, I will bring it to your attention. That's all I'm doing. Any, any questions or comments? I don't want to take up any more of your time.
Do you use a filter on your refrigerator?
I do. Refrigerator was not tested.
I use one on mine, too, for that.
I, I have to, yeah.
What did they test? How did they test water? Was it like through a hose? I'm just curious for my own information.
They, I was present at five tests. I don't know if that's all they took, because I think, I think five or six was the max.
There's six listed here.
I was present at five, wife was present at one. Four of them were from inside the house. One of them that I was present for was at the outside front faucet. Um, water ran four to five minutes, and then they put it in the bottle, screwed the lid on, off they went.
Well, I know in Baltimore, I said, five years ago, five years ago, went to the Baltimore, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and, uh, we actually won with Oklahoma City on the cleanest water in the United States. So, uh, that was a pretty significant deal for us. But we test our water from the wells, I believe, on a daily basis, isn't that right? We have to?
I see a head check over there. Wells are quarterly, individual water wells are quarterly, but daily system are done every day.
Every day.
Okay, that's why.
Are those results?
Public.
Public?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I can, I can verify these against those and see, see what's going on. I like that. Perfect.
If you're on a private system, a private system can sometimes differ.
Sure.
From those results. Now, if you've got city water, yeah, you should get with Robert back there, and you can compare the actual water. They can come out and test your water for you if you want, and you can compare it.
They're posted online.
Okay, thank you.
Posted online.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can, you can see if you're getting ripped off or not.
I'm not saying I've been ripped off. I'm not saying anything has happened.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, I received this report, and I would like to give it to my city council so they have a copy of it. That's it.
We can look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say how much I appreciate you coming and bringing this instead of just complaining about it online? I really appreciate you taking, you know, I know it takes an investment of your Monday night, and it's not always the most fun Monday night, I mean.
Well, it's not. I mean, we've all, we've all been here, but it's my job, and it's your job, to help me.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not here to say, hey, man, I've been paying for this for a while. I don't want to pay for it anymore.
Absolutely.
Give me my free water. I'm not here to say.
That was my backhanded compliment. That was a very sincere, true statement of, thank you for investing in your community.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate everything you guys do. So, please help me look into it, and if we need to fix it, let's fix it. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? There's no one signed up, putting on lunch this week.
That's only out there. Item B is item from the city council or trustees?
Appreciate the striking that I've been seeing happening up on 12th Street, 27th Street. It's very, it was needed, and I know that we have, we're trying to budget a little bit more for a maintenance project throughout the city, and just, so it's a good thing.
Any item from the city manager?
Hi, I actually know something. Sorry, I didn't know Mark was finished. Sometimes I, I just wait, because usually the one that bounces in. Uh, I had several questions this week about parks opening, so I know that our water parks and splash pads open Memorial Day weekend, is that correct?
Correct.
Good, because that's what I told everyone. I'm really happy that's right. Uh, but then another question, I know that, I've sat on a few committees on park planning, so I know that we start that process years in advance, it seems like sometimes, and maybe if we could just get some kind of document that says some of the things that we've done, even if it's just like quick, like PDF, that what we've done and where we're going with parks, I think that would be helpful, just for knowledge, the same thing like the water that we publish online. Uh, I think that'd be helpful for citizens and an easy thing to share, uh, for talking points.
Can we put on the website?
That'd be perfect.
On the website, there's a page that lists all the parks, and we put the plan for each park.
That'd be perfect. I would appreciate that. That'd be helpful. Thank you, Tom.
That'd be great. All right.
Just a couple of things. Mayor and council, as you know, Fire Chief Gary Byrd is going to retire May the 30th. I would like to announce that he will be replaced by Deputy Chief Greg Herbster on May the 30th, and look forward to working with Greg in the new capacity.
Wait, you don't get to start today.
That's a good thing. Now, mayor, council, Mr. Mitchell, I am very honored and humbled to be able to serve this community in the capacity of fire chief. It's not an opportunity I will take lightly. Um, I've been with this department for over 29 years, serving the last six and a half years as Chief Byrd's deputy. I know I have huge shoes to fill. He has been an awesome mentor to me. I'm very excited for him and his next phase of life and moving on to his well-deserved retirement. And again, as we move forward as a fire department, I know we'll have good things to come. As you all know, being a public servant is a very rewarding job, but being able to serve the community where you grew up and where you live is just extra special. I've been here since 1980. I graduated from Moore High School, my wife graduated from Moore, both my children graduated from Southmore. We're very invested in this community, and I promise you, no one's gonna be more committed to you guys and to these citizens than I will. If you'll allow me, my wife Sandra, back here, and my mom Jean. I have two beautiful daughters. Uh, my oldest daughter Chelsea's married, they have two foster kids, that's why they're not here tonight. Um, and then my youngest daughter Cassie's 24, so we just really appreciate all of you and look forward to the time we get to spend together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Last Friday, they, at Plaza Terrace Elementary, they had the pass the leash ceremony. This is the Barry and Becky Switzer Foundation that provides rescue dogs for fire departments that can go through and detect if humans are in wreckage after storms and things like that. So, uh, the city of Moore was, received a dog, as did other communities, so would certainly like to thank, uh, Coach and Becky Switzer for everything that they do with that, and we're, the city of Moore is very appreciative. The storm Saturday night, we had, had some concerns about 34th Street. Uh, we had just some loose debris that, uh, that was blown around by the wind. Uh, I'm not aware of any damage that was done to any vehicle or anything like that. Uh, the bridge is fine. Uh, there was no structural or any other type of damage done to the bridge, and, uh, this is an ODOT project, and ODOT will have numerous inspections of the bridge before it is opened and people are allowed to drive on it, so, uh, there, there are no concerns. That's my report.
Good deal. Item number 20 is executive session. Section 307, Title 25, Oklahoma statutes prevents the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. This is the opinion of the city attorney, but the city council may consider an adopted motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, consider approval of the fiscal year 2018-2019 contract between the city of Moore and the IAFF Local 2047 as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B-2. Item B, consider approval of fiscal year 2019-2020 contract between the city of Moore and the IAFF Local 2047 as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B-2.
Make a motion to convene to executive session. All right. Thank you.
Sir. We have a motion in a second. Would you help us, please? Thank you, guys, for the questions.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. I'd like to say before we go into executive session, I don't think we could have picked a better fire chief. Congratulations again. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Would you call the roll back from executive session, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Do we have a motion on item A, consider approval of the fiscal year 2018-2019 contract between the city of Moore and the IAFF Local 2047? And item B, or we'll do item A first?
Make a motion, we approve the contract?
Sir.
Thank you, vote. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam McKenzie? I'm s-
Uh-oh.
I'm so sorry. Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item curious. Item B is consider approval of the fiscal year 2019-2020 contract between the city of Moore and the IAFF Local 2047. Motion in a second, Mr.?
Make a motion to approve the contract.
All right. Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item curious. We have two very good contracts with the union, so appreciate, appreciate everybody's patience. With that said, item 21, this is German.
Salute.
Sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, would you call for the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams? Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Time to go home.
I'm double.
Thank you, two votes, man.